We're good.
Huh?
We're good. Okay, the July 21st, 2025 meeting of the Delray Beach Planning Zoning Board is called to order. Ms. Miller, would you please call the roll?
Jeff Maselman?
Here.
Mitch Katz?
Here.
Taker Strong?
Here.
Christina Goebert is absent. Chris Brown?
Here.
Judy Malika?
Yes.
Gregory Snyder?
Here. At this time, are there any changes to the agenda?
Move to approve?
Second?
No changes?
No. A motion by Mr. Brown?
Yes.
And second by Mr. Katz. If you could, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. We have no minutes. At this point, we need to swear in the, anyone who wishes to speak tonight. If you please stand and be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand by the authority of us to meet the notary of the state of Florida to swear firm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And at this point, we'll take comments from the public on any item that's not on the agenda. If anyone has any comments on non-agenda items, come forward at this time. Seeing no one, that public comment is closed. Okay, that's weird. There we go. This time, we're gonna go to,
Item A.
Item 8A. If you could read the item into the record, please, Ms. Dussler? Or?
And then you can read the rules or vice versa.
Oh, I gotta read, yeah, the quasi judicial rules. Okay. This hearing shall be conducted in accordance with the City of Delray Beach quasi judicial rules. The applicant and the city will each be permitted to present their case. The public shall be allowed to speak for three minutes each, or for a maximum of six minutes if the person represents an organization or group of people who are present but agree not to speak. The city, or the board members, staff, and the applicant may be allowed to cross-examine a witness, and the city and the applicant will be allowed to offer rebuttal testimony. The decision to approve or deny an application may not legally be made upon personal views as to whether the project is a good project or not, nor may a decision be based on the numbers of citizens who support or oppose a particular project. The law requires that all decisions must be made on the basis of whether the project meets the requirements of law, the comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. All right, now we could...
Good evening, board members. Rafiq Ibrahim, Principal Current Planning, and also Amy Alpariz, Assistant Director of Development Services. I would like to enter into the agenda today. Item 8A, all county paving files number 2024-173, 2024-174, and 2024-175, to provide a recommendation to the City Commission on three requests for conditional use approvals to allow concrete products manufacturing, including outdoor storage of aggregate material, resolution number 143-25; a request for a conditional use approval to allow storage of light trucks up to and including two-ton trucks, resolution number 144-25; and a request for a conditional use approval to allow bulk storage of gas and oil, resolution number 145-25, for all county paving located at 1180 Southwest 10th Street. And the applicant is here to present.
Okay, at this point, are there any ex parte communications, Mr. Strong?
No.
Mr. Brown?
I think Mr. Costello called me on the phone.
Thank you. Ms. Malika?
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Costello, and the applicant, and Mr. Sly, who works there, and toured the place.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Katz?
I spoke with Mr. Costello. I also went by and walked around a little bit and took a look at the site as well. I received a call from Mr. Costello, but did not speak with him.
I also visited the site and had a tour with Mr. Sly, and talked to the applicant and to Mr. Costello. Okay, Mr. Costello, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board. Jeff Costello, JC Planning Solutions, representing the applicant. Nice to see you all this evening. 981 Delray Lee's Drive, Delray Beach, Florida. So, as stated, the property is located at 1180 Southwest 10th Street. The properties, it's, as you see on the screen, to the right side is what was previously approved over 10 years ago, which contains the building, the headquarters, and all the various aspects. That's two, about 2.8 acres. And then the expansion is immediately, whoa, to the west, right there, to, about two acres. The land use designation is industrial, the zoning is industrial. And then there's adjacent zoning to the north. We have RM, and whoops, what's happening here? There we go. There we go. R1A, MIC to the east, MIC to the south, and then industrial to the west. These are just some photos. These are front, from Southwest 10th Street, and then from the south side off of Royal Palm Drive. The adjacent properties to the north across Southwest 10th Street, the Singh family and multi-family. And then to the south, which are industrial uses, and then to the east, and also industrial use, and then to the west as well. So, the proposal is expansion of the existing business operation onto the two acres, just to the west, and highlighted in pink. And installation of parking, landscaping, drainage, a ready-mixed concrete silo, a bulk fuel storage area, containers adjacent to the buildings, basic storage lockers, dumpster areas, site lighting, and associated landscaping. There will be a right-of-way dedication highlighted down there in the very south portion for Royal Palm. And there will also be dedicated easements on this, on this property as well. The conditional uses, Rafiq just went through those. And then those are the hours of operation of the business. Basically, for primary corporate arc business, eight to five, and then the contractor's office has some varying hours, just due to the shifts, shift changes. Required findings can be made with regard to LDR Section 3.1.1, the land use map designation. Of course, it's industrial, zoning industrial. And basically, the use, the conditional uses are allowed within the industrial zoning district. As far as concurrences, the staff report confirms that positive findings with regard to the adopted level of service standards. And there's also consistency with regard to the comprehensive plan, specifically the neighborhood districts and corridors element, the economic prosperity element, conservation, sustainability, and resiliency element, and the healthy communities element. With regard to compliance to the LDRs, Section 246A5, conditional use findings. In addition to the provisions of Chapter 3, positive findings can be made that establishing the conditional use will not have a significantly detrimental effect on the stability of the neighborhood within which it is located, nor hinder development or redevelopment of nearby properties. Again, it shows the surrounding zoning, the zoning map, to the left, you see the land use designations, as well as the zoning surrounding the property. The, the business itself is separated from the residential property by Southwest 10th Street. In this location, it's about 100 feet right of way. And then the parking and storage areas are even, even set back further, another 60 feet. Within that 60 feet, you'll have a landscape buffer as well as a retention area. And there'll be extensive landscaping installed on the perimeter of the site. And the west parcel containing truck equipment, parking, material, that's will all be in that particular location. That's their parking area, fuel storage, that's an active area, it's very isolated and restricted to the employees only. New industri, there has been new industrial developments surrounding this site, and new multi-family right across the street, Island Cove, that has, that has recently been constructed within the past couple of years. With regard to the conditional use findings, there's materials, the aggregate storage. The materials are stored, as you see on the screen, mostly at the southwest corner of the site. There's these bins located here, and then there's the silo right in that location. So, it's very, it's a southwest corner and a butt's existing industrial development. There, of, the aggregate is a range of sizes. The smallest is the sand, which is watered. My, my client did bring some examples, if you're interested to see the types of aggregate, to, you know, if there's any concerns. The site, the concrete silo is located 605 feet from residentially zoned property. It's 38, 38 feet high, and it's set back 10 feet from the west property line. There's photos on the screen with regard to the location. And then the screen, we're gonna add sable palms, some vertical elements, not that you're gonna totally screen the silo, but at least to soften its, its appearance. Fuel storage, there's a fuel storage tanks are for private use only. They're located right there where that rectangle is. To the west of the building, they're set back another 300, 390 feet south of the residentially zoned properties within containment. It's 51 feet east of the industrial property to the west. They're situated within a containment area. They're permitted by Palm Beach County Derm, and they're inspected annually. There's some examples. And then, as far as the truck and equipment parking, there's kinda little, but the fact is, is there, it's not, what it is, is it's not a storage, vehicle storage, it's, it's the parking of the fleet. And so, these vehicles are constantly, you know, on and off the site, the equipment. Some of them, sometimes they're just even stored at the site where there's road construction. So, they're an essential aspect of the, of the business operation. Vehicles are mobilized to the construction site during the daytime business, occasionally overnight. Equipment and vehicles do not really meet the definition of storage because they're just, they're not a, a long-term that they're located, they're on a regular basis moving. This area is set back again, 60 feet from the property line, 160 feet basically from the residential. They're, they're situated along the west side of the property. And then there'll be extensive buffering along both, whoa, whoa, along the north and the west, and then there's, and then the south. Actually, there's existing buffer on this property here. There is an existing hedge. There'll be, there'll be oaks, live oaks installed, as well as sable palms. And then on the north side, there's a large banyan tree, and there'll be other landscaping supplementing it, creating a, a nice visual buffer, in addition to the hedged material and fence. Trump, again, will be extensively screened. These are just some examples, as you see this throughout the industrial areas where you have the fleet storage, and this is the same as that. And so, in that, we, we feel that all positive findings can be made, as outlined in the staff report, and we respectfully request your recommendation for approval. One more thing on this, as far as the compliance with LDRs. The standards for specific areas, the wellfield protection. Again, these, the, the site is inspected annually, no issues. The outside storage, the lockers are located up against the west side of the building. There are containers and utilized for storage of, of equipment and employee lockers. And as you see there, all positive findings can be made with the other sections of the land development regulations. And I thank you very much. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Ibrahim?
So, good evening, again, board members. Three conditional use approvals, three different requests, three file numbers, three resolutions. Along with this, there are, there is a site plan and a plat, but the site plan and the plat are not in front of the board today. So, I will try not to repeat, so that we focus on the requests. So, the site to the right is existing, and the conditional use approvals are, are actually in the vacant lot to the west. Both lots combined are 4.86 acres. To the north, there is RM and R1A and light industrial. We will see more detailed land use map on this. And to the south, mixed industrial, commercial. West is industrial, east mixed industrial, commercial. The proposed is industrial warehouse on the existing lot, which is built in 1980, and then the expansion of the use towards the west lot with a three conditional use approval. I wanted to start with a little bit of a history because the two finding, the two conditional use, the three conditional use approvals, they have two findings, basically on the detrimental effect on the neighborhood, and whether or not approving the conditional use is going to hinder development or redevelopment. So, it is important for us to understand the evolution of the neighborhood, what is there. So, this is from the open source of the Palm Beach County aerial images. The three top images, 60s to 70s, like showed the site, actually. And then you can see like southwest running, Southwest 10th Street running east-west, bordering the site, and then there are like residential across the southwest, and it's very old, and it's existing since the 60s and the 70s. And you see like it was vacant all the way to the 70s and the 1984. The existing structure was there, the one to the left. So, this was built in the 80s, not always used by all county paving, but all county paving came into 2013. And then through the 1989 aerial photo, so, shows like more industrial areas. And you see like this diagonal road is the Wallace Drive. And then 1999 is more developed. So, there has always, it was vacant, and then until, and then developed into industrial areas, and, but the residential area to the north is already, was always existing. And since 2013, where the middle aerial image, you see like there is, at the north, which one, the one in the middle? I can't, okay, so, the, the image in the middle. You see, in 2013, all county paving came for an administrative addition, which is adjacent to Southwest 10th. This happened at that time, and then the vacant lot was shown vacant in the aerial images. 2007, the same thing, but in 2025, there are lots of activities going on there. There is an associated code enforcement case, 2023 onward on the operation, and then unauthorized uses of the vacant lot. So, for us today, it's a vacant lot, even though there are operations over there, it's unauthorized, illegal. Some contextual images. This is from Southwest 10th, and then the red rectangle is actually showing our western lot today, which is subject to the three conditional use. And then the eastern lot as existing. And this is from the other side, Royal Palm Drive and Lime Lane. So, this is the western lot highlighted, and you can see the silo, you can see the piles of aggregate. And to the eastern lot is, is actually existing. And this shows more of the context. To the northeast, single family dwelling. And then directly adjacent across the road to Southwest 10th, there are multi-family and light industrial just to the west of it. While on the other side of Southwest 10th, it's mostly all of it industrial with different zoning designations, like industrial mixed use, industrial and commercial. And this shows like enlarged aerial photo of the scene. The three requests with the three resolutions are to LDR Section 4420, D3, D2, D17. D3, which is concrete product manufacturing, including concrete block and ready-mix concrete. D2 is about bulk storage of gas and oil, and D17 is storage of light trucks up to 24 feet and, a, wide and 10 feet high. The next three slides, each one will focus on one of the conditional use. I wanna give you really more context on what exactly is required. So, the D3, which is the concrete products, basically, there is no concrete being manufactured on-site. But the aggregate, the different types of aggregate that are stored are used off-site to actually manufacture the pavings. But the material stored on-site, this is what we are seeing on the screen. And then if you really focus on the smaller images, you will see two coins, a cent and a quarter, I guess, just for scale. To understand about the scale of the aggregate, what type of aggregate we are storing. So, there is lime rock, and then Rock 57, 89, and screening sand, and the milling. I wanted also, I want to mention that the applicant provided a narrative for every conditional use request, and this is attached to the agenda today, based on the request of staff during the tech review. So, this is thank you to the applicant, which provided all the information that we requested, so that you can really make the finding based on our best knowledge. And then to the right, this is where actually the aggregate will be stored, in the red highlighted areas. And then there is, the circle is actually showing the silo. And the silo's length, we also request the applicant to provide more details. I think it's 34 feet in high. So, this is something that is also need to be put in, into consideration. There are landscape screening for this, and I think in the applicant presentation, he showed the photo of it. And then we move on into the D2, which is the fuel storage. The fuel storage is exclusively for the use of the fleet of the all-county paving, and this is also indicated in the narrative attached to the agenda. It's in the red highlighted area, there are like different types of fuel storages. This has been approved by the Environmental Resource Management of Palm Beach County. They already reviewed the proposal and provided their approval, which is attached to the narrative of the fuel storage in the agenda. The applicant also highlighted in the narrative the mitigation for fuel leakage, like the concrete pad and the bollards to protect the tanks from any accidents or any vehicular encroachment, which are shown on the left side snippet. And then the third, which is D17, the third request, and then to, all the way to the right, highlighting where, exactly where there'll be like storing, storing the trucks. In this slide and the next slide, I highlighted actually all the fleet. So, everything that is being used in the site for operations is actually here. And if you really look carefully, you will see numbers of cars, or, or, or trucks. The, every photo includes the specification and the number. And again, the applicant provided this in an attachment to the agenda because we requested this. So, we, we wanted to understand about the frequencies, about the numbers of, about the capacity. You can see it on this, on the screen, and this one, and the next one as well. So, these are all the vehicles and trucks being used for different types of operation, even though like moving material or equipment or personnel. With that, I also wanted to give you an idea about their operation. This is done off-site. So, this is not related to the site at all, but this is like how the paving operation like are being done. Different machines, different equipments are being used. And this is basically the business of all county paving off-site, not conducted on the site. With that, at the center of this conversation today, or the discussion today, is actually conditional use. So, we wanted to give you an idea about the LDR definition of a conditional use. What is a conditional use? A conditional use is a use that is not appropriate, generally without more restriction. So, the use actually is somehow consistent with the industrial zoning district, but because of the intensity of the use, we require more restriction. And we require, and this is not permitted by rights. So, the conditional use is not permitted by rights. It has to be granted. This is conditional. And it has to be allowed after a public review. It cannot be administrative, so it must come to a board, and the board must examine it for more than a reason, not only for the board members to discuss with the applicant, but also to provide the public the venue to comment and voice their opinion about the use. So, this is why we also send 500 feet mailers to the neighborhood for them to voice their opinion, and this is why, in front of the board, there's a public comments. Why is that? To ensure sense, the, the context-sensitive compatibility. We need to ensure this. This is basically our mission today, to examine the request and ensure it is contextually sensitive. One important thing is a conditional use could be revoked. So, this is not granted forever. So, conditional use, even if granted for reasons or another, if the applicant violated the conditions of approval, this could be revoked through a process. So, it's not forever granted. And this is the core of our discussion today. So, the board finding must find- So the board finding must find that the conditional use will not have a significantly detrimental effect upon the stability of the neighborhood within which it will be located, nor hinder the development or redevelopment of nearby properties. Staff report provided one page for every conditional use with more analysis and scrutiny to every single criterion here, and with more questions for considerations. But the conditional use approval must meet the requirement of section, LDR Section three point one point one, which is the land use map, and I mentioned earlier that it's industrial, and the zoning district is industrial, and the land use is industrial. So there is no, there is no code, sorry, comprehensive plan amendment is required. This is why it is compatible and consistent with the comp plan. However, because of the intensity of the use and because the code also require that this is being, should be processed as a conditional use, so it does meet the comprehensive plan, except for your approval or your recommendation for approval that it's good or no to go. And then B is concurrency, it meets a concurrency. So we have like the transportation TPS letter from Palm Beach County is provided. The drainage is required, and so basically, there are no new constructions to trigger more services like sewage, water, drainage, schools are not applicable. Roads and transportation parks and wrecks not applicable. So it does meet the concurrency required. And concurrency.
If you could wrap it up.
Yes.
Please.
So policies, we staff report identified seventeen different types of policies that are relevant, and I think we skip this part. This is LDR, it meets the LDR requirement. I highlighted here the landscape buffers. And basically, the findings, the one, two, and three. There are consideration for the board, and we can actually come back to it if you, during the discussion, if you wish, and then the board actions. And this will conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time, is there any public comment? Huh? You're gonna give us jelly?
Excuse me, what was that? Or just a public?
Public comment first. Is there any? I think, I think we have some public comment.
I knew Christine was gonna talk.
I'm the only public comment.
Welcome, Madam Ex-Chairman.
Thank you, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here, thank you. I'm still Christina Morrison, and I still live at one thousand Lowry Street in beautiful downtown Delray Beach. Been involved with this property since two thousand and ten. One of my investors tried to acquire it, but Ken beat us to it. The property was troubled. I'm not going to go into the history of the Amalung property or what happened there, but it was a troubled property. Ken bought it, completely redeveloped it, renovated the building. He now is one of the major employers in Delray Beach, has over a hundred employees, many of them are Delray residents. His, this is his national headquarters of his company. This is a very significant building for his company. As has happened with many companies that have moved to Delray Beach, it's booming. His business is booming. Companies move here, and they think that they're going to stay stagnant or, you know, easel through. No, many of the companies we've moved here, I didn't move Ken here, but others that we have moved here are flourishing, and Ken is, Ken is just another one of those companies. The area has blossomed since Ken took over this property and redeveloped it to the immediate east is Tenth Avenue Business Park. Then Coastal Supply, which built their building a few years ago, is beautiful. That's where Chuck Halberg's office also is. And then behind that, we have properties at Georgia Lime. Wallace Business Center is there, that was developed in the mid, mid part of the decade also. And the area is now a beautiful industrial park. We don't have enough industrial land in our city. We're mostly residential tax base, very detrimental to our poor residents that have to pay the bulk of the taxes. So to have a company like this in our city is very, very important. You'll notice in your report, there are no negative impacts of this use. There are no other neighbors here complaining. They all got noticed, and none of them are here complaining or objecting to this expansion. He's using it exclusively for his company, and the growth that he's experienced, the more trucks. When, when he first bought it, the original thought was, well, do we use it for more employee parking? Because they have a lot more employees than they thought they were going to. But it's blossomed to be used for more important things to grow his company, the trucks, the equipment, and the supplies. So I ask you to please approve this. It's a very, very good use for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, public comments closed. Any rebuttal by the applicant or the staff or cross-examination?
Not really rebuttal or cross-examination, just, just some examples here.
Ah. I thought we were gonna get jelly.
Looks more like a science project.
That's what it looks like. But, but also, just want to say, it's a, and appreciate staff working closely with us and, and basically guiding us through the process. And to really, the intent is to fully comply and install these improvements as quickly as possible, you know, and have a, you know, increase the buffering. You noticed on, in Rafiq's presentation, there was that open area. That'll all be landscape, heavily landscape. So appreciate, any questions available? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hebrin. Any further?
No, no rebuttal, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment before we start the discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, just based off the fact that you all seem to be familiar with the property or have gone and visited, I just want to give you a reminder that just the fact that the company is already operating is not really relevant, supporting evidence for your consideration. So you shouldn't be holding that against them, but it's also shouldn't be used as a justification or approval.
Yeah.
If you need any.
But that's irrelevant.
Correct.
As Mr. Hebrin said, we should consider that to be a vacant lot.
Perfect, yes.
Legally, it's a vacant lot.
Pretend to not see what we saw.
Right, but I know you already went, so that's fine.
Yeah, that's okay. But that was to get a view of what could be.
What could be.
An imagination.
What the project would look like, okay. Oh, Ms. Vegas, thank you.
Board comments, Mr. Strong. A couple of questions first. The pending cases that are open now, is that under the current ownership?
Yes.
The pending cases, the code enforcement cases.
Right, yes, that's correct. That's correct.
That's correct, but just again, repeating my comment, you shouldn't be holding that against them. That's not within your purview, that that's all happening within the code case. So it's not something to be holding against them, but it's also not a justification.
All right, so help me out here. Last month, we had, I believe it was last month, we had something similar. It wasn't commercials, residential.
Residential.
With the shed in the back, right? So, and I know one of the things that we pointed out was, listen, that shed was illegally put there, and the new owner, you know, so.
Right, and that's why we, we, they were asking for approvals if they hadn't done it. We did not approve it, so they now have to come into compliance.
It was a good example of.
Right, so if we were, if tonight, if we said, no, we don't approve this, right? And it doesn't, and the City Commission doesn't approve it, they have to take away whatever they put there in order to meet their compliance.
Correct, and I mean, that's just pretty much irrelevant to you. I'm asking you to basically act like that doesn't exist because it shouldn't be impacting your decision. Again, like, we're just looking at the standards within the LDR that the applicant and staff has presented. Just because, I mean, that's the only way to treat each applicant the same, you know?
I got you, I'm glad to clear that up.
Actually, it actually brings a good point, that, that project, because we denied it based on if they had built it today, right?
Right.
We said, no, it wouldn't meet those clarifications, and that's why we denied it.
Okay.
So actually, it kind of fits into that narrative.
So I'm good. Thanks for clearing that up.
Mr. Brown, if you could share your expertise.
I'm gonna ask the planning department a question. Put your mic down.
Put your mic down.
You can never hear me?
Nobody can ever hear you.
So I have a question for the planning department. Do you have a big vision for this area? Because one of your criteria is will not hinder development or redevelopment of nearby properties. Do you have a, do you feel like this, this use has hindered the development? We had a witness that said it didn't. So you, do you have a big picture in your master plan in your, in your department of this area, this industrial area?
Okay, so there are too many layers here. One is, the area is almost fully developed, like the industrial area and let's say, south of Southwest Tenth Street, mostly developed. And this is why perhaps I showed some aerial images to show the evolution of this. This has always been developed. There are, we identified some seventeen different policies that are relevant to it. Some of the policies speak about preserving the industrial asset of the city. Hindering development, the only concern which we, not the only. One of the concerns, let me just rephrase it. One of the concerns that we highlighted in the staff report, the proximity to residential across the road. And this is why I mentioned that we send them like mailers, just to appear or just voice their opinion if it's on a fact. The applicant perhaps can speak better for this because they proposed landscape mitigation, landscape buffer, which is ten feet. Landscape buffer between, north of the project, adjacent to Southwest Tenth, and ten feet to the west, adjacent to the other use, and south, adjacent to the Royal Palm Drive. These are highlighted in the staff report, and perhaps I think I would, maybe this is, this will conclude my answer to that question. Did I answer your question? Thank you, sir.
More?
Well, I do think it's important that we require the, if we were to prove this tonight, require some kind of monitoring of the air quality surrounding this plant. Particularly since there, you know, dust in this, things like that. If they travel, they travel, and they don't just go across the street. They travel miles. And I'm just sort of concerned, my first question was a concern, is this an oddball industrial use in the middle of some pretty nice buildings? As there was a witness earlier talked about, the door company. I know the door company very well, I know the contractor. Is that the use we're looking for in the future? Are we looking for a sort of an industrial use that handles materials? See, that's a very different kind of word. A door company that sells doors and stores doors, and sometimes fixes doors, is different, and it's all indoors, is different than an asphalt company, paving company. I realize they don't do any work onsite, they don't batch onsite. And that was, you were careful to, to bring that up. So I'm gonna think about it for five more minutes and pass it to my neighbor.
I want to say something, and then I will pass it to the applicant. During the review, the tack process, we requested the applicant to provide us some proof that the air quality will not be affected. So what they did, which is also attached to the agenda today, is they provided an air permit from Department of Environmental Protection. You can elaborate on this, and this is also attached. Then we also highlighted in the report, and then on the screen here, the, the main concern is the dust control, screening, and height of placement of aggregate. In their attachment, they also provided some mitigations, which is like moisturing it or covering it. I will let you elaborate on this. Thank you.
May I?
Please, please.
Rebecca, can you put my presentation up? And so, to your point, not every conditional use fits the same, depending on where it's located. And so for the vision for this, of course, we all know the policies regarding the industrial zone district, and there's limited opportunities. The, my client occupied this site, and, and is, the proposal is to expand. And if we could go to the slides dealing with the, the uses. Oh, I'm sorry, I can't, sorry, it's right here. If we can, sorry. Okay, so taking all this into consideration in the air. So as, as stated, the air qual, we have submitted an air general permit registration with Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and that's included in your backup. Given this, the way the site's laid out in the surrounding area, to the south and west are the industrial. And so therefore, the site is designed, the layout, so that that component is, is basically located at the very southwest corner of the site. So it would have no impact. If it was on the north side, that could be a real issue. And, and I just want to point out too, is that this area here, there will be landscaping. This green area is a, is a retention area. So that's where, that's sixty feet back. The main store, the, the main aggregate, that it's all located here. You can't get it any further away. And so with that, I, understanding the concern, and, and that's our concern too. And so the mitigation includes, that as you see these, these materials here.
Pass the aggregates, I know you want to. Do you guys want to see the aggregates?
But anyway, so the finest of the material is watered, and, and so, and it's, it's one bin. And you see the bins are on the south side of the property. You can pass these down, please, thank you. And, and so, and with that, they're limited in height, it's eight feet in height. They're pretty, they pretty much are on and off the site quickly. There's no manufacturing on this site. It's basically material storage, and then it's sent off-site where it's mixed and so forth into the construction site. So taking that into consideration, that was, that was, the way this is being designed and laid out, even with the, with the fuel storage, it's adjacent to the building, but it's so, it's, it's much further away from the residential, and it's very contained, and it's permitted through Palm Beach County Durham. And I know technically, it's not approved, but it has been permitted through them. So the concerns with regard to the comp plan policies, as stated by Rafiq and the staff, were very detailed, by the way, addresses, all that. And so we feel that this, what you see isn't what you get because what my client's doing these use, we're gonna plat, and for permitting, includes installation of the drainage, the paving, that area, installing landscaping, installing site lighting. And so all that's now in the next, if we're able to move forward to do that, I think it is critical. There is limited areas in Delray Beach where we couldn't accommodate even a use like this, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give you A plus on your fifth grade science project.
Okay, so I know there's nothing on the site, it's just a vacant property, but I do know that that more fine sand would be watered down. So with regard to dust, those large things that you see in there are gonna create any dust. If there were gonna be any dust, it'd be like the beach sand sort of thing. But they keep that, they would keep that watered down. With regard to Mr. Strong's comment about the code enforcement, this is all part of solving that problem, I think. That's, I mean, it's not our problem, but it's, this is all part of solving that. So I don't think I have any questions. I read the materials like crazy, but couldn't quite envision it, so I'm glad I did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go see it.
Mr. Katz.
Sure, I have a couple of questions, and maybe Mr. Costello could answer, but... So the front, you had that picture up, your thank you slide, which is perfect. It shows the 10th Street, which I know that's not your official ingress egress, but it's, it's the biggest exposure to the side. So my question is where the fence line is. You said there's going to be greenery. So instead of seeing that ugly green wrap on there, they're going to see shrubbery now?
So you're going to, on the outside of the fence, I believe there's a hedge?
So there'll be a hedge now, instead of, like, right now you have, if you go to your very last slide, you can see it. Or no, that's his slide. It's his slide, yeah.
Oh, I know, where you're showing the...
The picture.
Yeah.
Of the front of the...
We're hiring.
Yeah, the, we're hiring, exactly.
Okay, yeah. Oh, here we go.
Which is, I'm looking at the street maps, just to give me the example, but, so there.
That.
So right now they're looking at this fence with this green. So instead of looking at that fence, they're going to now see shrubbery, right?
My understanding, and I'll, I'll double check that. I thought we had on the outside of the fence, it doesn't make sense to put it on the inside. I believe it's on the outside.
It should be on the outside, so when people, that, those neighbors across the street that aren't going to come to this meeting, they probably never saw the notice, read the notice. You know, that's, they're, they're trying to worry about their groceries. But for them to, instead of looking at that fence, for them to look at some nice shrubbery, I think would be a good condition for approval of this.
Right, and so our landscape plan, that's not before you, but it does have that, and it could be maintained, you could say maintain it at six feet in height.
Yeah.
I guess that's the highest we could, adjacent to a right-of-way. But then inside that will be trees staggered. So there'll be a mixture of palms and silver buttonwoods. I think because of some of the utilities in that area, we're limited without putting live oaks. However, I believe at the corner, there's a big banyan that you see, I, I, I... But that, but that's too...
Yeah, the banyans there.
Yeah. And so, and then I think there's some gumbo limbo that will be provided. So that will be, you'll see that, because I think adjacent to the residence required every 25 feet, trees. So you're to create sort of a solid visual. So what you, let me go if I...
Here's my, here's, I'll just give you my thoughts.
Go back.
I'm, I'm okay with it. I think that adding the shrubbery, the trees will help hide the silo, the trucks, from the neighborhood. People, you know, 10th Street is a very heavily traveled scene, so it is a, you know, it's a welcome to Delray. The people are coming from, you know, the south end of, it's a cut through essentially, instead of, because Litton's gotten so bad, right? Everybody's taking 10th now. So I, I really appreciate that there's going to be shrubbery there to block that, or not shrubbery, trees, because that silo's huge.
Correct.
You know, all that stuff is big, and those trees will mature, and that will, that will end up being a nice buffer there. My only concern is that ugly fence, if that could be shaded with, you know, because obviously, I'm assuming you have the, the screening there just to keep people out from seeing what's going on, what have you. Shrubbery would do the same thing, but more aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood, in my opinion.
Okay. I'll double check. I believe it may be a, was it calusa?
Yeah, calusa would be perfect, because calusa now grows like, I mean, within a year you'd have it six feet.
Right. And, and to your point too, along the west property line where there aren't overhead lines, it, it's a combination of sable palm groupings and live oaks. So from that angle, as you, it'll, as those mature too, it'll further obscure the, the silo and the yard, so.
Oh, yeah. That's the only thing I would want, that is a condition, that there's calusa or another shrubbery that they would want in front of that fence. Otherwise, I'm good.
Thanks.
I have a couple of questions. One is to Mr. Abraham. It's with, with regard to the conditional approval, is it, was it my understanding when I heard you, that at any time in the future, the city could rescind this?
Can revoke.
Revoke?
Revoke, like, conditional approval is based on conditions. Like Mr. Katz, for example, suggested a condition. And the conditions could be add, more conditions could be added, like, depending on the board discussion. You may require more landscape, higher trees, or whatever, likes. Then if the applicant did not comply to the conditions of approval, yes, it could be revoked, and this is also my understanding. Rebecca, would you like to add to this?
Yes, so there's a specific process that a violator would have to be taken to, giving them a chance to right anything that is wrong. But then there's specific findings, there's four, that the commission would have to make in order to revoke it, and I can read those off if you'd like, but, um, but I'll go ahead and read that. That the approval of the conditional use was obtained by misrepresentation of material fact. The conditional use is not being exercised in compliance with the terms of the approval. The conditional use is having a significantly detrimental effect upon the stability of the neighborhood. The conditional use is hindering development or redevelopment of nearby properties.
So say they plant ficus there, and they get whitefly, and it gets wiped out, and they don't replace them. That would be a reason to revoke the condition.
And may I, I correct myself?
But nobody's going to plant ficus anymore.
Wasn't the calusa hedge, it was the, I think, copo, cocoa plum.
Cocoa plum, yeah.
But if you, you know, whatever you prefer.
I, I don't care what type of greenery, as long as it's greenery.
Okay.
And maintained. That's all I'm asking, is condition.
Another question is, was a, a, like a Department of Transportation study done for the trucks coming in and out?
So a traffic, a traffic statement was prepared. It doesn't, this is a local street. It, it's, uh, complies with the traffic performance standards, so it didn't have to take into account, that's it, that based on the, the movements and the trips generated. So that's, yeah, we, we didn't have an issue with Palm Beach County with the traffic performance standards, letter.
Final question, is it 100 full-time employees?
Yes, how, how many number of full-time? 100 full-time? Yeah, yes, or just...
Well... I don't know that everybody was sworn in.
There were sworn in.
You were? Okay.
Just your name and address for the record, please.
We have out of our local facility here, little over 100. Oh, Randall Sly. I reside in Coral Springs, 3099 Northwest 123rd Avenue.
Thank you.
We have a little over 100 active full-time employees that work out of our facility. At any given time, there are 50 onsite, admin, fleet mechanics, fleet prep staff. Most of our crews work remotely, meet on the site, and we have employees that also work out of our Fort Pierce office. 26 of these employees are actually City of Delray residents. And everybody that's in and out of this office orders locally, shops locally. We, we take pride in being part of the community. So out of that facility, 100 people pass through every week. 50 are onsite, almost daily. And we're always hiring.
Thanks.
We saw the big sign.
We could print that up too, but I won't make that a condition.
I give lessons on asphalt paving every day, so come on over. Anybody else, or is it?
There's one. Anything else? Mr. Brown, you have something else?
I just had, thank you for giving me five minutes to think about this. I think, I think what, what this application is, is they're cleaning up something that turned out to be not a good site, because they didn't, they weren't good stewards of their own site. So they're going to do a good job of cleaning it up, but I have a condition. I'd like code enforcement to go there every six months and make sure they meet the conditions. If they don't, then we'll, we bring them back here.
So that aspect, I don't think is also, like, that couldn't be a condition. I mean, we have conditions based off of like operations, like adding shrubbery or the hours of operation. I mean, it is code board's job to continuously be monitoring these things.
Right, we can't make a condition that the city employees are going to do their job, because that's not under their control. That's the only problem with that. So you're making a condition that requires employees to do something, and they can't, that they don't control.
I have faith in the city employees.
Right.
That they'll do their job.
They've done pretty good so far.
Yeah, they've done.
Okay.
Yeah, they did.
All right.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I basically, I think, pretty much what I have to say has been touched on already. In particular, the very last thing, which I have written down here, is that, you know, the, the two important things are, are the air quality and, and the appearance on the north end that Mr. Katz talked about. And those things have to be done properly. And I, I'm not saying they aren't, I'm saying that I think the plans are good, but what I have here is with exclamation points, it has to be enforced, and that just means code enforcement has to do their job. It isn't, we don't have to tell them to do their job, but if they don't do it, then everything we talk about is, is irrelevant.
Right, but that's just, it's outside of your scope.
No, but we can't tell them, yeah.
As far as your decision is.
But I'm just saying that that's important.
Those residents, if we notice it, we can come to the city commission.
Absolutely. And the residents that live there can come to the city.
And so with those violations, in order for us to close the case, which has been, we, we...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Because they're familiar with code enforcement.
We have to install the improvements and get CO'd by the city.
Yeah.
So we can't walk away if the city commission is, oh, we got to prove, no, that, that's not going to work.
So, um, just a couple of things, yeah. The, I mean, I think it's, it's always important to have, encourage industrial, and it's an industrial area, although there is residential across 10th Street. But we recently approved another industrial, uh, business building, whatever you call it, on, between 13th and 14th on the north side of, of, which is facing that multifamily residential, which is the same people we're talking about. So I don't think we're really putting excess stress on the residential area with this.
Chairman, if I may, real quick, and I will interrupt. And so to the point, the expansion area is only accessed off Royal Palm Drive.
Yes, exactly.
There's no access on the 10th.
Where? Yeah, there's no access there.
Ready for a motion?
The, yeah, I guess so. I just think, let me just make sure. Yeah, it's just got to be, we've talked about the things we think are important, it needs to be enforced.
Are you okay if I add that condition in there?
Can you put a condition on about the...
Can I ask a question first, staff? Is there one of the, like, resolutions that it's best? Okay.
Because this way, it's all, they're all relevant, so.
Is that okay for staff?
But, like, are we going to get three motions?
Yeah, we have to, three motions, yeah.
Just three, sorry.
Okay.
Move a recommendation of approval of resolution number 143-25, approving a conditional use request to allow outdoor storage of concrete products pursuant to LDR section 4.4.20D3 by finding that the request and approval therefore is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets criteria set forth in section 2.4.6A5 in the land development regulations with the condition that a hedge is placed on the north perimeter fence.
Outside.
Outside of the north perimeter fence. And maintained per applicable law, applicable law.
What was that last part?
Applicable law, like, because it's got to be six feet or something. It can't be over six feet because of the, it's on a right-of-way, and then whatever the laws are, they have to follow the law.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I would second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Katz, second by Ms. Malika. Ms. Miller, if you could call the roll, please.
Jeffrey Meiselman?
Yes.
Mitch Katz?
Yes.
Derek Strong?
Yes.
Christina Gobota Zabson?
Chris Brown?
Yes.
Judy Malika?
Yes.
Gregory Snyder?
Yes, that motion passed.
Moving a recommendation of approval of resolution number 145-25, approving the conditional use request to allow fuel storage pursuant to LDR section 4.4.20D2 by finding that the request and approval thereof is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets criteria set forth in section 2.4.6A5 in the land development regulations with the condition that a hedge is placed outside of the fence on the north perimeter and will meet applicable laws.
Second.
Okay, another motion by Mr. Katz, second by Ms. Malika, and call the roll, please, Ms. Miller.
Jeffrey Meiselman?
Yes.
Mitch Katz?
Yes.
Derek Strong?
Yes.
Christina Gobota Zabson? Chris Brown?
Yes.
Judy Malika?
Yes.
Gregory Snyder?
Yes.
All right, last, we're on a roll. All right.
Move a recommendation approval of resolution number 144-25, approving the conditional use request to allow truck storage pursuant to LDR section 4.4.20D2 by finding that the request and approval thereof is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets criteria set forth in section 2.4.6A5 in the land development regulations with the condition that there is a hedge placed on the, outside the north perimeter fence and meets all applicable local laws.
Second.
Okay, another motion by Mr. Katz, second by Ms. Malika, and the roll, please, Ms. Miller.
Jeffrey Meiselman?
Yes.
Mitch Katz?
Yes.
Judy Strong?
Yes.
Christina Gobota Zabson? Chris Brown?
Yes.
Judy Malika?
Yes.
Gregory Snyder?
Yes, that's also passed six to nothing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck on building that project that's not there.
Yeah. No, good, get this, get your...
Thank you.
Get that hedge plant first, so they can start growing.
Code things cleaned up and, and get going.
Mr. Costello, do you have your aggregates?
Oh, that's right. He, he's a, is a...
Yeah, and he's going to need that for the next...
Jelly jar is better.
He's got to go to the commission still, too.
Not to say anybody needs an aggregate.
Thank you very much. Okay, I don't want to make that anymore, but landscape, I think, what do we know?
Thank you very much.
And Jeff's not going anywhere.
Yeah, good luck.
I can't wait to get it all done, believe me.
I'm sure.
Clean everything up. And every success.
Next time, get the permit first.
I'll talk about that later. Okay. Whenever everyone's ready, we'll move on to item 8B. If you could read the, enter it into the record, please, Ms. Doster.
So I'll read into the record at the same time, item 8B and item 8C, because they're related, and the presentations will be presented as unified whole. So 8B, we're reading into the record file number 2025-067, and for item 8C, file number 2025-066. And we have Mr. Costello here again.
Mr. Costello's show tonight. Thank you, Rebecca.
Sorry to do disclosure, ex parte?
Oh, yeah, we have to do ex parte again.
None.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Costello, call me.
I spoke with Mr. Costello.
I spoke with Mr. Costello.
Sounds redundant, but I spoke with Mr. Costello.
I received a call from Mr. Costello, but did not speak with him.
Mr. Costello?
All right.
Please.
Thank you.
Another chance.
So this particular item, you may recall about a year ago, there was a land use map amendment and rezoning before you to change the zoning from CF to R1AA, which those items were denied. However, at the city commission meeting, there was some discussion and its direction to amend the comp plan and land development regulations to allow adaptive reuse of a historic place of worship to, to a single-family residence in a CM zoning district. At the Historic Preservation Board meeting on July 2nd, the, the board unanimously recommended approval of the changes to the comp plan as well as the land development regulations. With regard to the comp plan text amendment, positive findings can be made with LDR section 245A, amendments to the comprehensive plan. The comp plan objectives and policies support the adaptive reuse of historic structures. The amendment to the historic preservation element and neighborhood districts and corridors element further support the adaptive reuse and conversion of historic places of worship to a residential use. You may recall, if, if on the board at the time, there was a concern with regard to potentially more than one residents on the site. This is very specific to a historic place of worship. Can only convert the historic place of worship to a single-family residence. The proposed amendments are consistent with the applicable objectives and policies of the neighborhood districts and corridors element, housing element, historic preservation element, as well as... element, as well as the property, private property rights element. These are, well, so I briefly had the other, the section of, in there, there. As you see, that's the addition objective regarding historic places of worship and the supporting policies that are outlined in detail in your staff report, and then the neighborhood districts and corridors element, there are the two policies that are being added to that section, and then some cleaning up the objective. With regard to LDR amendments, 247A5, positive findings can be made. The LDR amendment, the amendment to the CF zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and further supports the preservation and adaptive reuse of historical places of worship in the CF zoning district and throughout the city. With regard to the changes of the CF zoning, I'm sure Ms. Dossary will go through in even greater detail, I'm just going to go through, it's in your backup, and the various portions, there's some cleanup to the CF that was included, just primarily shown on this. The most important, too, is the addition of number 13, single-family detached residence resulting from adaptive reuse of a historic place of worship. And then with that, there's also development standards. With this, you, there, the, this would be subject to, if you are to convert, to, adapt the reuse to a single-family residence, be subject to the R1A, single-family residential requirements. These are greater, as you could see on the screen, the CF, basically, there's no minimum lot width and so forth, but these would be subject to the R1A. In fact, the setbacks are primarily 10 feet for a CF, height of 48, this would be subject to the R1A, the lot dimension requirements and so forth, and the setback requirements. The intent, though, is this is occupying an existing historic place of worship, so however, with that, as you may know, in the RM zoning district, if you're building a single-family residence, it's subject to the R1A requirements, and so for consistency, that's where the R1A came from. And then there's other special regulations. I, this one here, I did not include, there's been an addition to the special regulations, and if you won't mind to go over that, basically, that requires that a marker of some sort be provided identifying the historical significance of the structure. And then there's definitions that were needed. Anyway, this particular map shows the CF historic districts and places of worship throughout the city, kind of zooming in a little bit, I identified, there's basically a handful where this would apply, could apply, in the district, in Delray Beach, in addition to my client's property at 200 Southeast 7th Avenue, St. Paul's, Mount Olive, St. Paul's, AME, and even on Trinity, I think there's a parsonage that's designated. Again, these, those are the limited applications to this. And the results are, there's many results of the adaptive reuse, and in Florida and in other areas throughout the country. And so with that, respectfully request your approval, recommendation of approval of these changes. Thank you.
All right, good evening again. So as Mr. Costello said, there is a comprehensive plan text amendment proposed along with an amendment to the land development regulations. These two had to move together to make sure that there is consistency between the comprehensive plan and the LDRs, so some minor adjustments made, but adjustments that are made in support of the adaptive reuse of historic places of worship specifically. So again, this is mending two elements, the historic preservation element and the neighborhoods, district, and corridors element in ordinance 825. In ordinance 725, we're adding some definitions related to this type of adaptive reuse, and then modifying the principal use categories. So again, as Mr. Costello noted, this is related to 200 Southeast 7th Avenue. It's a contributing structure within the Marina Historic District, and the rezoning request that came in in 2024 was denied by commission, and they directed us to pursue this path. So we received the application and we are here today. So the comprehensive plan amendment is proposing the addition of three new policies, two new policies and a new objective in the historic preservation element, and then two new policies, unamended objective in neighborhoods, districts, and corridors. So the comprehensive plan now supports adaptive reuse in general, but these amendments are designed to specifically support adaptive reuse of places of worship and adjust how the community facilities land use category is characterized. Now, it speaks to a lot of specific benefits from facilities that are publicly accessible, but these proposed policy changes reframe it as more of a community benefit to acknowledge that even if the public were not to access this, if a conversion were to take place, it can still provide a benefit to the community from its role in the collective consciousness of the city and how it fits in with that character of the district. So the proposed amendment to the LDR, I'll start with the definitions. So we were starting out by defining a place of worship, because oddly, in our LDR, we don't ever actually define that, and then historic place of worship defining anything that is designated or classified as contributing could be considered a historic place of worship and therefore eligible to take advantage of any of these revisions in the community facilities zoning district. So we reframed this for, again, a more of a community service or benefit rather than facilities that maybe are specifically accessed by the public, and then we are adding this as a principal use so that you could just come in and go through the process to do whatever modifications you need. And then we are making sure that the development standards for any additions are subject to the R1A district, because if it was a historic structure, it had, it is what it is, it's not moving on the site, so we're not going to require that to change, but if someone was to add a guest house or a pool, it would be subject to the R1A standards. And then Mr. Costello brought up this policy change that he hadn't included, that staff brought up after HPB. So first of all, there are different special regulations in the CF zoning district that really wouldn't be applicable to a adaptive use conversion, so we specifically exempt this type of use out, but we are adding language that a contextually appropriate historical marker is required. We brought this up at HPB and they received that idea very favorably. We're not talking about one of the gigantic signs that you would see marking the Marina Historic District, but something smaller, and we would be deferring to the language that's in sign code now for historic signage related to size and height. So that would be the type of sign that we would want to see on a conversion, just so that people can know the story of the facility, even if they're not actually going into it. There are required findings for comp plan amendments and for LDR amendments, so all of these findings, A through D, would apply to the comprehensive plan text amendment, but for the LDR amendment, consistency with the comp plan is the only thing that the findings need to be based on. So again, the comp plan amendment and the LDR amendment needed to move together just to make sure that there is consistency between the LDRs and the comprehensive plan. We have here several policies related to adaptive reuse and the community facilities land use designation. The one policy that we're changing here is that it would be serving a community benefit rather than actually perhaps the use. So there's a broad support for adaptive reuse of historic structures as a means of preserving these structures. And the housing element also speaks to historic resources and asset that help define the neighborhood and the value of using historic structures for residential use. And then again, in the historic preservation element, we have a lot of broad policies about adaptive reuse and how we should amend the LDR if it would serve to preserve a structure better. So, let's see, and then moving on to, and then we have the property rights element, which speaks to allowing people to use their property and have the discretion to use it as they need, so this amendment is proposing another tool in the toolkit for historic property owners. And again, these are some examples of adaptive reuse. This is one that is not a church to residential, but it's one that is well-known in Delray and its central location at Dara. And then there is a segment of the population that really likes to convert these unused churches, which have notable architectural qualities into residential uses, so there's many ways that it can be done to preserve the historic structure. And as Mr. Costello mentioned, there's maybe at this point only about four properties that this could even apply to. We have them shown here on the map, which is very hard to read, but, so it's limited in applicability, but it does add another tool to the toolkit of historic preservation. So I wanted to touch on the compliance with the LDR related to historic district requirements for preserving structures. Any application of any kind that goes in a historic district is required to go through a COA certificate of appropriateness process through the historic preservation board. We have the Secretary of Interior guidelines for rehabilitation, and section 451 of our LDR has visual compatibility standards for historic properties and districts, and then standards for specific areas or purposes, again, another section refers to the requirements of the historic properties. So whether it was, this property was to remain in use as a church, as it was built, or to convert, these are the different guidelines that it would be subject to, to make sure that it maintained its historic integrity. So then, as considerations for the board, just whether the amendments are consistent with these policies that we already have in place in the comprehensive plan, and whether adopting this LDR amendment and comprehensive plan amendment will support the preservation of historic resources. And that concludes my presentation, and we're all available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Does any member of the public wishes to speak about this? Seeing no one coming forward, public comments closed. Is there any rebuttal or cross-examination from either the applicant or the city? He said no. No? Okay, to the board, Mr. Meiselman.
No comment.
Mr. Katz?
I don't know, I don't know, I think it made more sense the last time around, but this is where we're at. I do, I'm a big fan of adaptive reuse in general. I think it's a way of preserving, you know, history and, you know, still getting some use. I think a great example of that right now is Sunday Village. Everybody didn't, wasn't crazy about it, but if you look at the homes that are now going to be restaurants or what have you, you know, they're beautiful, they really came out nice, and it's a way to preserve things. I will say, I'd also not crazy, that's why I don't like it as an element, like specifically for the whole area, because now you're potentially getting rid of those community facilities, and that's a problem. I mean, I know, just, you know, I attend occasionally a synagogue near my house where he's literally having to meet out of his house because he can't find anywhere that meets that community facility where he can open up his synagogue, right? It's, now, this wouldn't apply to this, it's a different part of town that where he's looking, but in general, that is, you know, as you wipe out those community facilities, it's harder, right, to replace, because there's not a lot of money in building a church or synagogue or whatever, right, from the ground up. So that's my only concern, but I think the commission kind of put us in this predicament. You said there's only like four other potential, and it's only to this district, so it's, at least it's not citywide, so it's only applicable to maybe four or five properties at the most.
Yes, and we do have a lot of other, I think we have a few that are churches that would maybe qualify as historic that are in already a residential zoning district, so they could go in tomorrow and change it out, but, so it is limited.
And it would be no, the zoning would still only allow one home, so this church should just be a home, they can't be a multi-residential, anything there going, it would have to be that.
Correct.
Which, what if they wanted to turn it into like a hotel or something? Is that, I mean, to me, that's not even a bad, you know, use for adaptive reuse.
That is not one of the permitted uses, and I think it's only in Oshad is where Airbnb, not Airbnb, Bed and Breakfast?
Yeah, the Bed and Breakfast aren't even, I think it's Oshad.
I think it's only in Oshad.
It's only in Oshad, so you have to rezonate or to a commercial.
That's a shame, because that would be a perfect area for that, but it's not applicable, so. But, so it's going to be a single-family home, again, I'm not crazy about doing the whole district, but it's better than just that going to waste and nobody using that property, so.
Thank you. Ms. Malika?
I agree with Mr. Katz that this could have been just rezoning, it would have been a lot easier. So Mount Olive's two-story, this specifically says it's a one-story residence, right? I mean, not that the church is ever going to turn into a house.
No, so it could be a single family, but I don't, I don't think we said.
It's just single family, doesn't say.
Single family.
Oh, okay.
Just have the phones or whatever the height restrictions are.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you. I'm approving this.
Mr. Brown?
So Rebecca, is the, is the purpose of this ordinance to save historic buildings? Is that the purpose?
So this was a privately initiated amendment, and the, I can let Mr. Costello speak to the intent of his applicant.
The intent is to allow another, another historic preservation tool, to allow adaptive reuse of the structure to a viable option, and in this particular location, it was to be a single-family residence. You recall, we came forward, it's privately owned, it's not owned by a religion, an institution, religious institution, it's privately owned, and this, it would be an adaptive reuse for a single-family residence in that neighborhood.
So the concept, if it's based on trying to save the historic building, albeit turned into a single-family residence, is good, but it's very limited, because we have churches all over this community, they're a lot bigger than the one that's being applied for, and they wouldn't be candidates. I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't change St. Paul's Episcopal Church into a single-family house.
No, so it is, as we noted.
It's going to be historical property.
Well, it's going to be in the Marina Historic District in particular, right?
It has to be a historic place of worship.
A historic place of worship.
So if it's designated individually or within a historic district as a contributing structure, that, and it's CF land use and zoning, then it would be applicable to this? So anyone wanting to do this outside of the CF zoning district that is historic would have to go through the same process that this applicant is going through.
So, and outside the CF, as Ms. Dossary said, is that there are a lot of historic places of worship that are already zoned residential, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be dealing with this. They would just apply through, if they're designated, through a COA, application for the change of use, which they can do now. So it's, what we're asking is for the ability for this, even though it's CF, because it was a rezoned to a single-family, to allow that as an adaptive reuse in the CF zoning district, only for a historic place of worship. And if you may recall, there was some concerns about adding another residence. Well, this would only allow one residence, single-family residence, and it has to be in the historic.
Well, it's pretty limiting, because there are not many churches.
Exceptional limit.
Yeah, I mean.
Now Trinity, for instance, has a parsonage.
Four that would qualify in Delray Beach? Is that what you said?
So there are only four other historically designated places of worship with CF zoning, there's obviously more.
Right. Okay. Okay.
Mr. Strong? Mr. Strong.
So, my biggest issue with this is, Mr. Katz indicated, was we're losing that, another community facility. And I have a hard time grappling with that, especially since, since it's a church, and it's a historical church. I think the best use of any church, especially in a historical church, for viability, is to allow it to be open to the public. When you take that element away from it and you make it strictly private, to me, that it loses some form of historical significance for me. And that's just my personal opinion on it. And Jeff, I know you mentioned there's, there's a handful of them throughout the city, but I think the downside to that is we have less buildings that could be used for community facility purposes. We're taking away one now, and I don't know how many we want to have left. So, I just have a problem.
I would say I consider, I'll go ahead of you.
If I may, so, this was a result of a congregation that diminished to maybe ten people, maybe five. And the church wasn't viable. It was, started to deteriorate. There was no, you know, and so, my client purchased it and has been maintaining it. And so, really, if you think about it, how often do we all go around to these places and go inside to see the church unless you're a member or if there was an invitation? But what you get, just like any of these other historic properties that have been adaptive reuse, or in a historic district, is the visual ability for the community to see that historic asset. So, in this case here, that historic asset will be visible, just like any of us driving by today. As far as losing community facilities, we can't control the economics of a congregation, of an institution. There are some uses that are allowed in the CF. Some are more viable than others. And, and then to try to, you're trying to, it's very limited what you can do. So, with regard to losing our community facilities, it was a zoning designation that was applied. And it applies also in the CF allows assisted living facilities, community residence homes. I wouldn't consider those as this community's, like City Hall, where you have public meetings, but they're in the CF. Senior Living, La France, is allowed as a conditional use in the CF. That was a way to allow that and further restricting it. So, it's not just community, where the general public is in, I think the benefit here is, there's an individual who privately owns it. It's private property rights, right, so it's not always inviting people. But you have the ability from the exterior, where we see this asset and we know, hey, that was moved from the Boca Airport to Southeast Seventh Avenue in 1947, and is, and it's being preserved for the community's benefit as a whole.
Did I see in the reading materials that it's currently being used as a museum now?
A museum, yeah. So, whenever she purchased it, she, she went through a change of use as a museum, and with that comes in certain things, challenges as well. But this provides another opportunity for the adaptive reuse. Have you seen in some of those photos, which is unfortunately, or fortunately, is the fact that congregation, church attendance is diminishing throughout the country? And this is an ability where folks are stepping up and saying, look, we're going to preserve this for future generations.
Okay, it's not being used as a museum now, is it? Oh, you are? Okay. Sorry, I misunderstood that. That's fine. Yeah, I think, I think this is an excellent way to put this. I support reuse for this. When I lived in England, my house was the Old Village School, and it was exactly the same kind of thing. And I think that, I mean, this, this building is privately owned. It's not going to suddenly turn into a church if we tell them they can't have a house.
Unless a church can afford to buy it.
Unless some church buys it from them, but that's not going to happen.
It's going to be a church with very deep pockets.
Yeah, I mean, basically, it's a private property at this point. And, and I think that, you know, we have to think that private property owners have some rights, although, you know, they have to be reasonable. But I think this is a reasonable reuse thing. I think this is fairly simple. My only ques, I have a question, and I have a, I forget what you call it, a little minor thing about the LDRs that you might want to look at. So, if this all goes through, then what is the procedure for this to be actually occur and turn into a private residence?
Sure, I might actually need to call Ms. Alvarez up here, but generally, any application has to go through the Certificate of Appropriateness Process.
Yes.
So, for building permits, for any exterior changes, anything, it goes through Historic Preservation Board.
It's HPP with a certificate of appropriateness, but it would be a building permit. Any, anything that was building would require a permit. There's no site plan required.
Well, with the Certificate of Appropriateness, you're submitting a site plan, your landscape plan, and your floor plans for the adaptive reuse. And that needs to comply with 451 of the LDRs, the historic, and then the Secretary of Interior Standards and the Preservation Guidelines.
It doesn't come back here. It goes through Historic Preservation. Okay, that's all. And then the last thing is a bookkeeping thing, I guess is what you'd call it. In 451, there's a chart that shows which type of things are minor and which things are major. And so, it's going to need to say, under CF, it doesn't say single-family.
Thank you for that.
And it should say single-family if we're going to approve this. And so, what does, what does that mean, major and minor? I mean, I understand what's minor and what's major, but what's the difference in procedure for major and minor? Is it a difference in approval procedure?
We have our assistant director here, who spent a good bit of time in historic, so I'll let her answer rather than Director.
And I probably shouldn't be asking this, because it's kind of really not relevant, but I want to know the answer.
It's okay, it's educational. I was trying to get away with not having to get up at all. Amy Alvarez Development Assistant, I did swear in, Assistant Development Services Director. The difference between major and minor, it's, it's defined in Section 451.
Right.
And I'm thinking it through, I'm not.
Okay, sorry.
Because it's been about 10 years since I've been in the Historic Preservation Division. But it just, it determines if you're major, then this criteria applies to you that's in 451. If you're minor, then only some of it, so it determines which criteria is applied to you as far as the 451 section goes, because some of, some of the criteria, the visual compatibility standards, have technical requirements.
Oh, okay, all right.
And so, it just depends. That's why we needed a matrix that clearly wasn't clear enough.
Yeah, I understand. That makes sense. Thank you. Okay.
Your turn.
Yeah, so we have a motion please.
Move a recommendation of approval of ordinance number XX-25, a privately initiated amendment to the Always Delray Comprehensive Plan by adopting a text amendment to the Historic Preservation Element and Neighborhoods District and Quarters Element to support adaptive reuse of historic places of worship as residential use. Finding that the amendment and the approval thereof is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets the applicable criteria set forth in the Land Development Regulations.
Second.
We have a motion for Ms. Malika, a second for Mr. Katz. Ms. Miller, if you'd call a roll, please.
Jeffrey Meesling?
Yes.
Mitch Katz?
Yes.
Deidre Strong?
No.
Christina Gobana Zapson, Chris Brown?
Yes.
Judy Malika?
Yes.
Gregory Snyder?
Yes, that motion passes five to one.
Second motion.
And we need the other motion on the LDRs.
I can pass it to you.
Oh, do you want to, is there any?
We need the LDR.
Just do it.
It's A.
Somebody do it.
Here, I'll do it.
Here, here.
I got it.
I'll make a motion for a recommendation of approval of an ordinance number 0725, privately initiated amendment to Section 4.4.21 Community Facility CF Zoning District of the Land Development Regulations to allow adaptive reuse of historic places of worship as a residential use by establishing it as a principal use category and to adopt regulations for the use and to adopt definitions, place of worship and historic place of worship in Appendix A definitions.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Katz, second by Ms. Malika, and Ms. Miller, please call a roll.
Jeffrey Meesling?
Yes.
Mitch Katz?
Yes.
Deidre Strong?
No.
Christina Gobana Zapson, Chris Brown?
Yes.
Judy Malika?
Yes.
Gregory Snyder?
Yes, that passes five to one. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
By the way, it was the Christian Science Church.
Yes, it was.
Wasn't it Scientology?
Oh, was it Scientology? It was Christian Science.
No, that's a call. This is actually Christian Science.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
They actually still, apparently, I looked it up now, there's some congregation here in, meeting at the Fairfoot Inn.
We have no legislative items. We have staff comments.
Yes, just the only note, I know we've had some of the dates for the upcoming meetings, a little bit in flux. I think we had two different dates up for the August meeting, but just to say, it's August 25th is the August meeting date, and then September 26th, which is a Tuesday. There were, with the shifting for the budget meetings, I apologize for the back and forth. But these are your two dates, and we will hope to see you in August and September.
So, August 25th and September 16th.
All right.
And that's it.
And?
Nothing from me.
Nothing from you, and board comments? Mr. Strong, any comments?
No, sir.
Mr. Brown.
No, but one day, I'd like us to consider.
No, but?
So, that is a comment.
I'd like us to consider legislation on historic houses that is stronger than what we have now, because people are allowed to tear down historic houses. There are communities that you're not allowed to tear it down unless you make provisions for it, and that is to move it. And I, and I don't, I moved while I was here working for the CRA. I moved four or five houses. Mr. Strong knows some of the houses that are on Fifth Avenue that we moved. And so, I think we need to have stronger teeth in saving historic houses, because they're going to go and develop, like, I live on a street, Northwest Ninth Street. The most beautiful Mediterranean revival was essentially torn to bits and pieces. And the modern building is an abomination. I mean, if I had that student in my architectural studio, he would, I would, I would have failed him. So, and so, we don't want to lose any more historic houses. We want to save them. Have you ever talked about that in your, in your, in your planning department?
We do. Our planning department, department are huge supporters of historic preservation and how these structures play a role in keeping that fabric of Delray, so we absolutely are looking for all the avenues we can to.
Well, I'll give you one idea for you now to discuss, and then we can discuss it here among our colleagues. You can't tear down structures, but you can move them. And if you, if you, if you, there should be a penalty if you don't rehab, if you keep the structure and you don't rehab it according to Secretary Standards, then you, 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 you have to do it.
I will say that we have a lot of pre-application meetings with property owners who have old structures. They're not designated historic just because they're not within a district or no one has applied for the individual designation, and we refer them to the Historic Division. We tell them they should keep it, and they say, mm, it's not that great. I'm just going to tear it down. So, we understand that frustration for sure.
I mean, I've still, because he was a professor of mine, when we lost the Paul Rudolph House, it was like a knife, knife sticking in your back. And that was one of the greatest mid-century modern buildings we had. We don't have hardly any mid-century modern buildings in Delray, but that one was. And it was essentially gutted and torn down.
The 28th of August?
25th.
25th. 25th, it's up there.
25. Thank you, it's 25.
It's on the paper here, too.
And it's on the paper, they just hand it out.
Judy, it's on the paper here.
No, oh my gosh, it's everywhere. Thank you.
Does that match?
Nothing.
I'd like to know why Delray is in a deficit. That's what I'd like to know.
Pardon?
I'd like to know why Delray is in a financial deficit.
I think there's a.
Oh, yeah, I don't think you had a so back here.
I know, I know, but how can you not?
I'm sorry, can I just ask a question, Rebecca?
Yes.
September 16th, that's a Tuesday? Is it because there's a budget meeting? The budget meeting is on Monday, the 15th, so we had to give precedent to budget. So, you can come on September 15th as well, two days in a row.
So, we're, so we're on the 16th, we're on the 16th.
We are, Tuesday, the 16th.
Even though we just sent it out a paper that says the 15th.
Oh, did it? Okay, I scratched it out. It's supposed to be the 16th.
You're trying to confuse them. The paper says the 15th of September, and that's wrong.
This is too much.
It's on the screen.
This is 16th.
Follow the screen.
Okay, I'll look through that. I have something to say, and I, I had this in my notes to deal with the first item, which was the cement plant. And they're, and what they're doing is trying to rectify.
Just a second, though. I mean, there is a final plot and a site plan, right, that might be coming back to us? It's a possibility. The plot will not now, because the new changes to plating. That if it comes back, if it, if there's a possibility of the item coming back to you, then we should not be discussing it, even in board comments.
I'm discussing the fact that there are too many people coming before us to get retroactive.
Ask forgiveness?
Forgiveness for violating the permit and zoning. That people, and those people are an example, that's all. There was the other cement guys that do the swimming pool cement, I don't know what you call it, up there on Congress.
The gunite.
Came in.
Yeah.
The gunite people.
The gunite people.
Gunite people, yeah, absolutely.
That was one meeting I missed.
And, and if you look at building permits, I guarantee you, if you go into different properties that have building permits, you'll find a huge number of, started without the permit, right?
Mr. Chairman, this brings up another subject.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, here we go. You know, industrial, industrial, every city has an industrial category. But sometimes you have to define it as industrial one, two, three, or four, and give it different. You don't want somebody to run an asphalt plant in the middle of our city. That's the middle of our city. That's an inappropriate use, but we can't change that. And eventually, what happens is the land value and the taxes are so severe, they end up having to sell it, and you end up getting a coastal, a coastal door company, which is a beautiful building. You know what I'm saying?
But what's an appropriate industrial use? Industrial is industrial.
No, it's not.
There's a.
No, but there's different levels of industrial.
There are different levels of industrial.
I agree.
We do have the industrial district, which is the heaviest use is light industrial, and then MIC, which would be slightly less. So, we have like all of these, I don't know if they would, if the city were to be zoned today, those have been industrial for a very long time. So, we have those people with their property rights as industrial, and then that's why we do have like the conditional use process today, where you can see whether it is appropriate. So, we try within the three different industrial districts.
See, some, some items, you can't talk to each other, because it's not in sunshine.
Well, you can talk as long as we can all hear.
Okay, they, I was just saying, this company paid City Hall.
Yeah, oh, I'm not, I'm not arguing about that company, but, and then, just to your point, you know, what we did today, the gunite, both of those are conditional uses. That means that they have to have specific approval to put that business in that place. And it's not, whatever you said, an asphalt thing in the middle of the city. We have the right to say no. So, there are, there are some levels, so.
Now, there's state, state oversight, too, because they can come in and do the, use the Libocle Act, as they're doing with the former. the Libocle Act, as they're doing with the former hard drive site, that is now gonna be a whole lot of apartments. But, again, did we want, I mean, it was there forever, right, but does it make, at this point in life, does it make sense that, that there is a concrete pavement company on Congress, right, but now there's gonna be houses with some small element that they're required under the act to provide, but, but because we didn't change it, they were able to do it on their own because of new state laws.
Yeah, you can't.
We have no control over it whatsoever.
That's our problem with Tallahassee.
They could come in now, in this site, and build up, right? Libocle Act can come in there, because it's industrial.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a site where, if you want, if we said no, you could just sell it to a developer.
Yeah, absolutely. So I would just want to, for the record, because we brought it up, I don't have a problem with somebody coming before this board to try to clean up a mess.
I don't either.
Okay, I thought that's what you meant.
I just think there are too many messes.
Oh, well, yeah.
That need cleaning up.
Right, yeah.
I don't know what's going on, you know.
Well, how did it take them 15 years before?
They got a problem with this, too.
I mean, it took them 15 years before code enforcement even noticed that there was something there.
All right, let's move on from the issue. Let's, let's wrap up the issue, please.
Yeah, I think that's enough, unless anybody, the meeting's adjourned.
Okay.
I got that off in my chest.